I know that city clerk, Barbie Bryant, is the expert on that. So I wanted an explanation on our processes for the city. In regards to the open records policies. So are all departments online with the open records process?
Councilman Copeland, I'm not quite sure how we're going to address this because I've asked you several weeks in a row to submit your prepared questions so I can be better prepared to answer them tonight.
Well, these are just about city policies.
Well, I'd really like to decline for tonight until I can get prepared questions.
Okay, that's fine. Well, that is the question. Policies for the open records with the city?
Can you submit them in writing?
I will, but I'm gonna state them too.
Okay.
And if all departments are following the open records policy? And if there are departments that aren't following, such as, I know the police department follows the open records. If there is a department that doesn't, do they have a log that shows that if a document is picked up? Is there a name to follow with that, a date and time?
All right, and if you think of anything else, just write it down.
And since this is a work session, I had another question, if possible. City attorney, I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to make sure I understood the email that was sent out in regards to city employees not speaking to the city councilman. I understand the statute, but I just need a clear understanding of it. Are you saying that we cannot ask regular city business? Or we cannot ask any questions at all?
I'm not saying anything. That wasn't me.
Okay.
That was a memorandum from the mayor. My email was relating to the investigation. So I think, and I have a copy somewhere here, I think that was just misstated. Misstated that it was, no, I do not have that with me, I'm sorry. But it was indicated, at least in the standard, that that was a memorandum from me, that was not a memorandum from me. It was, I sought clarification. When I started reading about all this stuff, I said, I was like, well, that was a bad day, because I don't remember any of that. But I think what it related to was, under the same section of state law that empowers the council to investigate, it also states that if it involves city employees under the mayor's direct direction, that he can require that any kind of inquiries be submitted into writing, or any kind of responses be submitted back to him for his review prior to. Now, I don't have that here in front of me, so I may be citing that incorrectly.
Okay. So is that regarding all city businesses then? Or is that just the investigation, ma'am?
If you have a street light out, you want to call that in, you can. But other than that, no. If you have any questions.
Work orders.
Anything. If you have to, I want you to submit those in writing. Because I don't know during your chatting with departments, how will that lead into investigation? Will you hook it on investigation, or we're gonna do this? So if you have something that you want, you submit it to the mayor in writing, and then I will get it to the department.
And that starts now? So we are in an investigation? Is that correct?
Starting when you got the email. And I don't know if you're in an investigation or not, pardon, that's up to the city council. That's up to you all, but my directive was sent out that day.
So if we want to put something on the agenda for the meeting next week, we have to call you to do that?
Just go to the department.
But if you need to find out something from Tracy, or how much a tire costs in a firetruck, submit it to me in writing, and I'll get it to you, and we'll come back to you. Anything else? Okay, let's move forward. Let's go to the training hours. Do you want to do the training hours, I guess?
Thank you. Appreciate this. I believe your question, ma'am, was the training hours for the flex team back in October? Am I right on that?
I believe it was August, September, October, but go ahead.
Yeah, okay. And the explanation that you wanted was, why did they attend that training in Louisville? Is that correct?
Well, there were, as far as training, there was training that was not approved.
By the state.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
The training network that they went to, that was not approved on training?
I'm sorry. I think the simple question is that, will, in the future, will we look at state-approved training first? Will we see if the training is approved first?
Yes, ma'am.
Before they go and go to some training that is not approved by the state, and we may end up paying for it?
Yes, ma'am. There's a few other steps in here, I'll throw into that.
Okay, thank you.
As we go on. This is the 2017 training that the state offers for, and that they accept. There's nothing in here that has to do with firearms, and nothing in here that has to do with tactical training. The state doesn't offer any of those courses at all. So the flex team is obligated by the Kentucky League of Cities and Kentucky Tactical Officers Association to have at least 16 hours of training per month. Some of that we can do in-house training, and other more structured training that is accepted by the Tactical Officers Association has got to be from other agencies. Therefore, that's why they went to Louisville for that training. We've added a few steps in here to give us better accountability, both for my office and for the city, that the training has got to be pre-approved and pre-budgeted before they can go. And that will be documented. I've got the format, if you want to see that, I could give you the format of what we are instituting as of December 1, if you'd like those. Would you like a copy?
Sure, that's fine, thank you.
First one is what we call, hey, I couldn't call you. First one is the training request itself, the list of data training, the employer requesting his unit, his or her unit number. You all will go. His or her unit number, location, why they're requesting that training, so we can justify it. Sir, do you want one?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Why they want it, where is it gonna be overnight, are they out of state training? And then that recommendation, sir? That recommendation has got to go up through the chain of command, and eventually from my signature. Accompanying that training, we have something else for you. This is called a detached service agreement, which they will fill out. And this, fill this out to adjust their schedules, their work schedules, as opposed to the training schedules. And that will be submitted log, and this will help us figure out overtime, comp time. We don't do comp time anymore, but it'll help us figure out the overtime and the cost that the city will incur on us. It looks difficult, it is not a difficult form. This way, and this will, this is prior to the approval of the training itself, so we will be able to track both the training for the officers through the year, and track the budgeted items, so we can fall more within the budget. So, and this is for both, we will use this for both the state mandated training and the training that's not mandated. Anything else, ma'am?
Right now, so you started this December 1, right?
I instituted this December 1, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna go backwards.
Thank you.
We can move forward.
Thank you.
All right, that's cool. Now, let me ask one question. In reference to training, if they're traveling to go to that site, to that conference, are they paid for the training, or are they paid for the 12-hour shift?
They're paid for the training. That's the DSA agreement that you have. If they're scheduled to train for a week period of time, 40 hours, we will adjust their schedules on that detached service agreement. And it won't be the 12-hour shifts, it'll be, usually for a 40-hour, we'll build in two hours prior to the, the day before the training begins, 40 hours through. And usually, most of the training ends on that Friday, and that would run into that eight hours. So that will alleviate the majority of travel time.
Okay, okay, all right. The, I was looking at previously some timesheets, and the, it showed, there was a discrepancy. Because on one, I didn't know if it's because maybe of rank or what have you, but for training, if they're going to a conference, it would show that one would have 12 hours written for four days, and the other officer would have eight hours. And so I didn't know if that was something that you guys do, or?
No, we addressed that also.
Okay.
For training up in Richmond, which Richmond offers overnight accommodations. If I have an officer go up there for four days or five days of training, some of the officers were driving back, and then driving back the next day, and counting that in as travel time. If you have accommodations available to you up at Richmond, it's your choice to drive back and forth. We will not pay for that, that travel time. If they're going for that length of time.
Okay.
And I think that's what the discrepancy is that you saw, and that's already been changed.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, any other questions, folks? Anything I can add?
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
Well, maybe one question.
Okay.
Did you create these forms, or are they?
No, I did it.
Okay.
Well, I did, is it wrong?
No. Because a lot of times, people borrow forms from other agencies.
Well, you can borrow, you can borrow a generalized form from, you know, you can go on, online, get a generalized, but I created that for my department.
But, once I was in print, but I didn't want to say.
Well, don't say that. Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
What council members will notice probably in the future, you know, the council members coming on, is this chief has made and is making continuous changes from the past, and to get us into the future, and to straighten up the, what used to be done the old way, and what was done, just because that's the way we've always done it, and that's not what we are doing now. We're moving forward, and we're looking at the, I think, the accreditation.
Yes, sir.
The department, we're looking at that. So with that said, again, you're the vital man for the job.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move forward, and let's go to, and if there's more changes within this, not just this department, but other departments, and also the travel policies are pretty much the same as anyone else's. If someone in the electric department has to go to travel, he has to go there, he'll, he gets the same benefit as everyone else. We'll move on, and let's go to C, the Minnesota Board of Engrants, 2016-21, the vehicle take-home policy.
Greg, can you explain? Greg?
The mayor approached me some time ago about issues with city vehicles taken out into the county, and asked me to look at our policy. So I looked at our old policy, it was written back in 1997, our vehicle use policy, and it needed, it sorely needed to be updated. So I took that policy and the policies recommended by KLC, and combined them into the policy that you have in front of me. It addressed, you know, in 1997, there weren't really cell phones or mobile data terminals and stuff like that, so it addressed those issues and a few of the other changes. And that's basically it. I'll field any questions that anybody has about it.
Hey, unless, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. You said out in the county, did you mean out of county or in the county?
They take their vehicle out of the county.
Okay, but I think you said out in the county, or maybe I didn't read.
I may have, I'm sorry. They take their vehicle, so when they go home, if they have a take-home vehicle, and they live outside of our county, they would take those vehicles home. And we address that in the new policy. The only way that you would be able to do that is if you meet certain requirements. For instance, you have a status, an on-call status, so if you were part of the city that you would have to respond to some kind of emergency situation, like a power outage or a cable outage, you'd be able to take your car out into the county, to your home during the time that you're on-call. Otherwise, vehicles don't leave the county. Yes, sir?
Greg, I just read through it, this was one man's opinion, I think since we're gonna redo this, it'd be an opportunity to clean up and remove a lot of this stuff. When a rule, an order references other rules, like you have to have a valid driver's license, well, that's already a law. You can't be intoxicated when you're driving, that's already a law. You can't, you should follow all guidelines established by the safety program, and any other regulations of the city of Parktown. I encourage you, my opinion is, you could take a lot of this stuff out. It clutters it up. And when you reference other laws that you already have to follow in order to drive a vehicle, it just, it becomes kind of kludgy.
You might want to be careful about some of that, though, in case you want to use this as the grounds to terminate an employee.
For example, if you have an employee that loses his license, but he doesn't tell you?
Yeah. We have to have that as a?
Well, if you say you're not to operate under the influence, okay, then, you know, somebody gets a DUI on a city vehicle, and you don't have that in there, you may not have the grant, now let Larry Green.
Well, if that's the case, I yield. It's just, if it's to have the means to enforce the discipline, then I yield. It's just, if that's why that's in there, that's fine. It's not a big deal, it's just an observation.
Yeah, it looks like it's, you know, yeah, the first blush, it's like, whoa, yeah, you know.
Why are we saying you have to follow all the laws?
Right.
You have to follow all the laws. But if it's in there so you can, then that's fine.
Use it as a training thing. I mean, you go over it with the policy, and you might remind them that if they lose their license, they can lose their job.
Yeah.
And so it's just a point of safety.
But there, if there's something in there that's not, you know, the one that says they shall obey all city, county, state, and federal laws and regulations, that shouldn't just be in the operating city vehicle.
Right, that's in your citizenship handbook.
I think there's, but anyway, some of this could go into the personnel policy, if it wasn't just a vehicle. I agree with that.
So, Mr. Hagan, is there anything you want me to take out on that? Would be any suggestions? I'm just, it's just, it's an observation, it's just, but if those are being, being there for enforcement, I'm fine. I'm okay with it. Wait a minute. Yes, sir. I'm gonna vote for, for your decision.
Well, I'm looking at the vehicle, take-home cars, amount of people that you have in the city, and the amount of people that are taking them different places. I wanted that to be looked at. You know, it's, I think going outside this county is sometimes a bit much, as much as what we have going on, the liability aspect of it, and I think Greg did a good job on himself. And I hope you all support that, because I think it's something that's been, has been needed to be looked at for quite some time, so. Okay, go to D, city council investigation updates. Who's that, you?
That's me. I wanted to let you all know, since I sent out the memorandum, we, I have gotten the names of four attorneys throughout the state that appear to be, at least, you know, first blush, appear to be qualified to do the investigation. What I have done is I have sent out to them a, basically a request for, you know, services, is what I call it, and asked them to respond, asked them to respond quickly. Told them that I wanted them to respond by the end of business on Thursday, this Thursday. Fairly quick turnaround. I told them that basically there were two, as I've outlined to you in the email before, there's basically two portions of this, at least in my mind, and again, you all can depart from this, but at least it breaks it down into component parts. But the first, I think first blush issue would be, you know, what laws are applicable here that may have been violated? Once you've determined, you know, the severity of the laws that may have been violated, and I've asked them to give their opinion on that, then you can make the decision to do a full-blown investigation, a cursory investigation, or no investigation at all. I've told them, again, in this request for services, that I felt like that you all would probably want at least that first part to be done before your meeting, second meeting of the regular meeting of this month. I've gotten a little bit of pushback on that, because that would fall, the holidays would fall right in the middle of that. So I've had some people say, well, I'm not sure I could meet that deadline. I've encouraged the people that have said that, you know, with a limited number, I've said, well, put that in a request, instead of not submitting something, put that in what you've submitted. I didn't, I said, I think it was your, I just said it was your all's preference, I didn't say it was an absolute requirement. So, what I would expect, I expect at this point to get, my expectation is to get at least three responses, perhaps a fourth, based on my contact and interaction. When I get those, my intention, and as I said before the meeting, I warned Councilman Hagan on the theory of paybacks are rough, I'm going to, I'm going to send those to him for him to disperse, because at that point, I feel like I need to take a step back. You know, I've done what I needed to do, and at any point, if you all have questions of me or whatever, you know I'm gonna respond, but I don't want to take an active overseer's role in this process, I don't think that's appropriate. So, once I get those responses, I'm going to send those, and what I've sent out, you know, what they're responding to, I'll send those to Councilman Hagan, let him disperse those as he sees fit. And should be available to do that Friday, first thing, and then you all can address it at your council meeting next week, if you'd like. At that point, I don't know what, how you all want to evaluate those, or make your And I'll answer any questions you all have.
Well, I'll just say that's okay with me, if it's okay with everybody else.
So we'll have the four names, hopefully, three or four names.
What you will have is, I've asked them to respond, and basically give their qualifications, relevant qualifications. I've said, here's what's going on, here's what you all would like, and I've asked them to provide relevant qualifications, and it can be in the form of a resume, you know, with a high, I told them that you should probably highlight the relevant experience, then to provide at least a generalized idea of how they would proceed with the process, and an hourly rate, and a good faith estimate of what they think it would take in terms of time, hours, so that you all can get an idea of?
Just for everybody's information, I do have a lot of experience reviewing RFQs. I've been a lot of that during my career, so, because they can be sometimes not apples to apples. Sometimes they can be a little bit different.
And with, and to be fair to the individuals, and I told them I would advocate on their behalf, it's a very quick turnaround that we're talking about, and so, you know, just keep that in mind when you're reviewing them, that they didn't have a whole lot of time to respond, and that in terms of good faith estimates of time, obviously, they're assessing something in advance, as most, honestly, most RFQs, you know, you, if you're doing the, you know, RFP in this case, if you're assessing this as a project, you're guessing at what will be involved. But I think that it's important for them to, as I've told everybody who's talked to me, that I think it's important that they not only say, here's my qualifications, but here's how I apply those qualifications, here's what I think a process would be, and I think that'll be a good indicator of their experience in the area, I hope.
Okay, we move on? All right? I don't have anything to report, if it was just something like the chief were changing, fire departments doing a policy, a lot of changes to policy, police department is, we're getting away from, that's just the way it's always been, we're not doing that, we're streamlining, streamlining the policies and procedures. Of course, chiefs working on it every day, and fire chiefs working on it. So, other than that, I don't have anything else to report, unless Larry has anything to report. Larry Green, Tracy, anybody have anything to report?
Okay, Larry has the next one.
Okay. All right, well, we'll just move on to the administrative finance personnel report, the police, police department structure and job description review. Larry G, I guess you're up?
Well, I'm glad the chief approached, and then all I'm gonna do is say that it needs to be in the form of a municipal order to change the job descriptions, but.
Okay.
Chief's floor.
We're trying to bring more accountability from our employees to what I would call the command staff, sergeants, lieutenants, captains, and above. So we have somewhat reorganized the chart for the police department, where we have all four of the police squads, two days, two nights, are all reporting to one lieutenant. He will handle all the administrative duties for that. Beyond that, we have the three, actually four detectives, counting our task force detective, reports directly to the captain, so now they have one person they're gonna see, instead of trying to work out through two or three. I'm taking care of the administrative and civilian staff. Training comes under the lieutenant as ancillary duties that he would have. So we're just, we're, it's not military, but it's an organization charge that will give us better accountability for our officers, give them the knowledge of who to go to if they have a problem, and then we can bring it up to chain of command as we go forth. That'll be the changes in the job descriptions for police officer, sergeant, lieutenant, as we go forward. The only changes, I believe, are just gonna be who they report to, and we've had this in place for, I want to say, I don't know if I've been here almost a month, so about two weeks, we've had this in place. Questions on that? Yes, ma'am?
So it's gonna be more than just?
So, it's gonna be more than just the sergeants in the report, so we'll have other job description changes?
Yes, it'll be the officers will, will report to the sergeant that they're assigned to.
Okay.
Okay? The sergeants, all four of the sergeants will report to one lieutenant, and then that lieutenant, in our chain of command, reports to the captain if he needs to see me, and then the captain reports to me. The four detectives are assigned directly to the captain, so he can follow their investigations, and then I have the, currently, the two administrative staff.
So, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll make those changes in the job descriptions and submit them to the, to the council for, in the form of a municipal order. We had one, but it doesn't include all that, because the chief and I got started on the conversation and never finished it. Also, the sergeants were reporting to the major, and since Ray Lewis retired, of course, we don't have a major, and so that, that needed to change anyway, and it will change. In kind of a logical way, it would be the sergeant reporting to the lieutenant.
Yes, sir.
Lieutenant reporting to the captain. See, I never was in the military, but I'm catching on to this. You hang around the police long enough, and you, you start to pick it up. But anyway, that will be coming back to the council for a municipal order.
How will this fit in with the descriptions and things that we had when we had this person come in and break all these different classifications and things down? How's it gonna fit in with even the scale?
Well, the job descriptions remain the same. What they're, what they're expected to do, and that's pretty much what Kentucky League of cities calls for, is that job description, what their everyday duties are. The only thing that's changing is the reporting process, who their bosses are.
Well, when you take on more duties, there's usually a pay scale, and there also, and we just went through all of this.
But a lieutenant is still the lieutenant, that, that he's gonna have people report to him. It's, it's really, it's not much of a change from, from when the first reorganization, from, from what mine is, the work, he has, it's really, it's really no difference, and I'll send out a copy of both of those to you guys if you want them. But it, but if a, if a police officer is reporting to the lieutenant, his, the lieutenant's job description doesn't change, it's still the same, it's just that he's got it streamlined even better. It's not gonna change the classifications, though.
Yeah, if I was making it, then I'd take your point that, that if we change what people are doing on a practical level day to day, then we wanna look at their grades and ranges, make sure that they're not, they don't need to be adjusted. I assume that they won't be, because who you're reporting to shouldn't change, or either the amount of responsibility, or, or how much work, or the type of work you're doing. But if it does, then we should, we should look at that and make sure that we don't need to adjust the grades and the range, not the ranges, but the grades of those positions. So, I don't think it'll affect it, but we'll do, we'll do that to make sure it doesn't, if that answers your question.
Larry, are you just talking about changing the pay grades, or are you talking about salary as well?
I'm talking about that, if we make any change to somebody's job description, we want to review that change and see if it makes a change in the grade. If it did make a change in the grade, then that might, then a separate issue is whether that would, that would involve a, a change in what they're paid, but it wouldn't necessarily, because the grades overlap quite a bit. And I don't think it will, because mainly what we're doing is changing who they report to, but we will go through that step of, of seeing if it makes any substantial difference in the job they're doing. So, for instance, if, if the chief is going to be supervising the civilian staff, and that civilian staff was reporting to somebody else, they have one less person reporting to them, their job maybe would be a little bit easier. I don't think it would make it so much easier that they would, we would reduce their grade, because what they do on a, the other things that they're doing will take up their time and be of probably equal importance, we'll look at.
I will send you all a, or I will ask Bobby to send you guys an organizational chart of the four, and what the new chief's, what his is, I will, I will send that to you, and once you see it, you'll see it's really hasn't, and isn't gonna change that much, but it's, it's, it's what the chief wants, and that's what it is. You didn't ask for it.
One other minor complication in all of this is that anytime we change the job descriptions at all, or the titles, we're supposed to report that to the retirement system. It's a formality, because really what they're looking for is, they wanna make sure that, that everybody that's receiving hazardous duty retirement is doing work that, that is approved by them, by the retirement board as hazardous. So, they say, "If you make a change, send it to us." So, we make these changes, we'll make them in our ordinance, but simultaneously, we'll be sending it up to the retirement board, which only meets four times a year. Doesn't mean we can't still go ahead and make those changes ourselves, but it's another thing we have to do in that process.
Yeah, Mayor, just one thing, I wanna clarify something you said earlier, going back, backing up. Depending on the time of year or what's on the agenda, I may routinely call Tracy with questions, or Jessica with questions, if there's something on the agenda, or in the wastewater treatment plan, and it's, it's something that we do routinely. Are you suggesting that, that, that if I wanna call Tracy tomorrow and ask her about a question on something that's in the budget, that she's not gonna be able to talk to me?
You can submit it in writing.
To you?
Yep.
Well, Mayor, that's gonna make it impossible for us to do our job. That'd make it impossible. If, if something comes on our agenda, and it's gonna be out in two weeks, and I need to ask Jessica a question about an improvement in the wastewater treatment plan, and I have to send that request to you to get to her, I may not get the answer by the next meeting. Why, why, that, that's impossible, that's, that'd make it impossible for us to do our job, or why are we doing that?
It's tough, because I don't want anyone to hamper the investigation.
What's that have to do with the investigation? What does me asking Tracy about a question on the budget have to do with the investigation?
I don't know where, if you take one, one question can lead into another, and then it can, it can just lead into questioning employees about the investigation. If Larry wants to discuss that?
Another way to, to say it is, it's, it's hard to know, to draw what they call a bright line between, it all started with a council member that wanted to interview the police chief, perfectly reasonable, talking to the new police chief, but we are in a situation where the city council is, is launching an investigation into the administration, and there's a process for that, and it's set out in the statute, and it says that they can, they can ask questions. So, then, then you can say, "Well, I just wanna talk to the police chief about, you know, cars," or "I just wanna talk about whether you use a Glock or a Remington," and, but then, once that conversation gets started, how, when does it cross over from being a routine question about something that's coming up with the council, and, and then go into something that might, if, for instance, if you ask the police chief something, then you ask the captain a series of questions, you could, you could envision a situation where there would be a gotcha, where you'd have lots of people, lots of council members in the middle of an investigation, talking to lots of city employees, and finding out things, and saying, "Hey, there's a contradiction there." Hopefully, this won't last any longer than the investigation. And if, if, just to, to put something in, in writing and ask the mayor about, you know, if it has to do with the budget in the, in the water department, it's an inconvenience, but it, but it preserves what I would think of as the integrity of the, of the investigation, and, and the administration not feeling, not wondering whether some of those, some of the opportunity to talk to city employees isn't going to harm the, the administration, and ultimately, the city, maybe, the city taxpayers, as this investigation goes, goes forward. So, I don't think it would, I don't see this lasting beyond however long that investigation goes, and it would be wonderful if we could just say, "Well, we're all reasonable here. Any reasonable question that doesn't have to do with the investigation, sure, you can go ahead and ask the city employees that, but we're in an adversarial situation."
And you got a lot of the employees that are like, you know, have asked me, "Were they investigating me?" I said, "I have no idea." You know, I don't, I don't know what employees are being looked at, and they all, and they all feel like they're being looked at. I said, "It could be, I have no idea, that's the council's decision."
Can I ask you a question? It's okay with me.
It's okay with me.
Yes.
It's, it's related to this, I'm not a city councilman today. So, can I call Jessica and ask her a question about a public works issue? I mean, I ask, I mean, you know.
She can, she can, I don't think, Dick, I don't think you can divulge anything private at this point until you actually are sworn in, back to the city council.
Well, we are, we're, you know, we're getting ready to take office, and so we've got questions, and we're trying to get our hands around stuff, so there are questions. So, but I don't know if this gag order applies to a city, a city councilman-to-be, or a city councilman that's sworn in office, that's my question.
I don't, I don't think it would, I really don't think it would refer to you, to you are sworn in and become a city council member, then, then the investigation, because once they leave, this investigation is gonna be passed to you as council members.
I understand that, and we, and then the length of this gag order is to be determined.
And it's, and it's KRS-83, and it's determined on the length of the.
KRS-83 does not set up a gag order.
It just says that it's supposed to be an investigation by the investigator for the city council, that that person asks sworn statements, it doesn't stop anybody else from asking any questions on city business. You know, so, I mean, that's, and, you know, where something, you might ask somebody, you know, what's going on down the sewer plant, and it might lead to a question about the investigation, I mean, that's, that's just going way out, way out. I mean, I don't know how a council person can do their business. Everyone, the mayor's, everything has to be filtered through the mayor, I mean.
Well, I have, I have employees that I worry about, that are concerned. Okay, we'll just, we'll deal with it when we can get there.
We're asking that question today, because nobody knows.
Yeah, so, if you need to call and ask a question, go ahead. I mean, you're, you're still a citizen, you're not sworn. So, if I, if I went over to my mom and say, "Tracy, I'd like to see a copy of this year's budget," she can hand me a copy of this year's budget. It's on the website. I mean. Yeah, you don't have to go to her, Tracy, you can use it on the website.
Well, something that's not on the website. You know, there's more detail than.
Or if I wanna ask her a question about a line item in the budget, or something, for my classification, would that be a? You're not a council member, you're still a citizen. I can still do that, then, okay. So, when you, yeah.
Okay, there, one more thing. I understand about the investigation and being careful about, you know, not asking the wrong questions, but it seemed to me that the investigation and the findings wouldn't be based on sworn testimony, not conversations. It's, it's not, I think it's impossible that I'm gonna have a conversation with Tracy on something, and she's gonna tell me something, and what am I gonna do with that? What, what, how's that gonna affect the investigation? How could it possibly affect the investigation? It's not sworn testimony, she told me, she didn't tell anybody, the investigator, what am I gonna run and tell the investigator? I, I think it's, I think it's going, I think it's gonna hamper, it's gonna unduly hamper the effectiveness of the city council doing this business by trying to stop something that has no possibility of affecting the outcome of the investigation, because the investigation's gonna be done by the investigator, who's gonna be taking, asking questions, and that's the information that's gonna be used, not me talking to Jessica about whatever we're gonna talk about. I think you're, I guess you have the authority to tell the employees not to talk to people, but I think it's just, I think it's, it's beyond the pale.
Okay. The city attorney hasn't been paying enough for these questions?
I, I think what Fred just said was right, that the mayor can direct employees to do, how to do their job, that's his job. When I was asked to weigh in on this, I think that it's a little premature, you know, I've said this, and this is not a news flash to the people up here, I said it's a little premature, and it's a little broad. When you, however, let's use the question that Councilwoman Copeland asked a little while ago about open records, and was there a log? That directly affects an investigation, because a lot of the information in this packet, I've not seen the packet, was open records, and how did they get them? Was some, did somebody tie in a log? So, that question right there probably is inappropriate as affecting the investigation. So, you have to, you have to be careful, but I think that it's a little broad, that what the mayor's done is a little broad, and it is a little premature. I would hope that whatever investigator was hired could maybe weigh in on this and say, as a person outside of this, that's one of the reasons why I went outside of this community, somebody comes in with a fresh point of view and say, "You know, you're overreacting here," or "This is a lot bigger than you think it is." Somebody could come in and maybe say, "In my experience, this is how we do this, and how it's done appropriately, and continue to do city business." One of my concerns is now, and going forward, is that the city council meetings have been used as kind of fact-finding, that's one of my pet peeves, is that we come in here and question people, and that's not what city council meetings are for, it's to transact business, you know, we're here to make decisions, and you, you do your investigation, you go and get information, like Councilman-elect Shekel said, you go and ask information about a budget item or something, and then you come in and say, "I agree or disagree, or I've, I've just, here's what I've found and why I have the opinion I have." I think that this will affect that, and for the short term, will make city council meetings more fact-finding rather than decision-making. So, that's kinda where I'm coming from, but, but the mayor can tell, and, and I didn't realize some of the strained relations in past administrations, but I understand that at some time in the past, there's been mayors that have inflicted embargoes, no mayors that are in this room, by the way, that have done something similar, and I think, I think that's unfortunate, I hope that it is short-term, I hope that it's short-term, because I do think it'll affect how we do business.
You know, a problem is, is if I go out here and I'm, and I'm talking to one of the guys that's in Public Works on the street, and he's down there working on a water line or something, and looks up at me and says, "What are they investigating me for?" And I'm not, I don't have nothing to do with nothing, and they're all, and they're all worried, I've got multiple complaints. My duty is to the employees, is to the citizen base and to the employees, and when they come to me and they're worried about, well, do I have to, do I have to be under a microscope with one of the council members, do I ask and answer questions? No, you do not. You know, you're not employee of a, of a city council member, you're the employee of the city, and you work directly under the mayor's office, you guys know that, and I'm just looking out for the employees, that's what I do. So, so, Mayor, just so I understand you here, are you stating that, or implying that council members are interrogating employees? I did not say that, did I? Well, he said they were, said they were nervous, concerned. They said they're concerned if they could, if they would, if they would be interrogated by council members. I think you're trying to put words in them now. No, I'm just trying to. This media's here to understand, but don't do that. No, I'm just trying to understand what you're saying, and it, that's what it sounded like to me. I thought it was pretty clear.
Well, I think is, I think, again, as we go forward, this is a matter of course, I think that, and I'm pretty sure this is what the council's doing currently, is, I don't think you should be going to necessarily individual department people, you should be going to department heads, you know, if you want something from engineering people, you go to Larry Hamilton and say, "Larry, can you figure, find this out for me?" If it's something for Tracy, you go to Tracy and say, "Can you find this out?" If it's personnel, you go to Larry Green. I think that's what y'all doing in part, because you don't necessarily, like me, I don't know who does the stuff, I don't. I don't know. So, but...
That's the way you, that's the way it should have been done, but I can tell you in the, in the first years, if employees were being talked to, you know, out of respect for the departments, you should go, always go to the department head and ask for that instead of running across and, again, too, there's, there's a fine line of whether these employees, who, whose employees are they? They belong to the city and under the directive of the mayor. And they're, and no council member can direct an employee to do anything. And that's what, that's, that's what we're at, so.
Well, I think that this, I agree with Councilman Hayton, I think this is really restricting the ability of the current council members and the future council members in trying to do business. So, I hope this gets fast-tracked on this hiring process and this gag can get lifted. To Tim's point, we really ought to be able to talk to department heads. If I wanna, I've walked almost every neighborhood in this city during the campaign and I know where there's a missing street signs. Something as, as simple as that, I can't call Ben Bird and say, hey, you got a street sign ordered for West Broadway and West Deacon Foster? There's not one there. Somebody's trying to find that street. So, now I gotta send that written to you, right? Because that's how, when I was, at the first year.
Just do it in a, do it in an email. I mean, you know, you can do that.
What would be the response time for an email sent to you? Do you have a response time? Is it 24 hours? Is it 48 hours?
Whenever I get a round of reading, you know, I do...
Can you understand our concern then about sending you requests?
If you turn to the streetlight, I will say that streetlights been out for some time, like I had brought around the other night looking at streetlights. So, is, and I usually check my emails at the end of the day.
So, are you gonna give us a response time? That would be nice.
As soon as I get to it. Yeah. So, I get to the email at the end of the day, so you can get it at 11 o'clock at night. Um, you know, I do not sit at the computer all day long or...
I'm not asking you that. I'm not asking that.
Hold on just a minute. I don't carry this or sit at the computer all day long. I've got other things I gotta do. And the only time I answer emails is in the evening. Or if you get a chance, you can come up and see me.
But it's a fair question. That's what I'm saying.
At the end of the day, you could get it at, at the end of the day and, or by, by morning.
Larry, you, you discussed this with us and you had a hard time discussing it when you were speaking. This is my personal opinion, but I truly believe that it lacks faith of your department heads and your staff. It also shows fear and intimidation. And I'm sure that this KRS statute wasn't designed for this. You know, the mayor has this call. He, he's making this call, but as Tim has stated over and over again, the employees have been through so much. I can't, and I can't see any one of the council right now talking to an employee. We talk to the department heads. We give them that respect. So, I, I think this is pretty bad. I think it's pretty bad because it, it makes it look like we're, we're targeting employees. And, and that's not so. And I, I can't understand how, it's true, how would the council be able to do their job? I just asked the mayor for a response time. And at any corporation, that's a fair question, a response time. 48 hours, 72 hours. But when I get to it, well, something might happen to you and, and you may never get to it. Or you might have an emergency. You may never get to it.
If that's the case, then you all have to let someone to sit here at this point. Okay, 72 hours.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would hope as we go throughout this, even during the short time period, which I hope it's a shorter time period, I hope that if, I'll, and I, and I would advise the mayor, if, if, as we go through this, if, if the system is not working and it appears to be unnecessary, I would suggest that, that the rules be relaxed to the extent possible and to work with whoever the investigator is to make sure that it's reasonable. I think that's, you know, I think that's the best for the citizens.
Well, I know the KRS in that, in that statement, it says councilman investigate or, and/or an investigator. Well, we took the action for an investigator to do it, not ourselves. Why would we want to do it? So...
But you never specified who you were gonna target. I asked those questions. Who are you gonna look at? Who are you gonna target? These people in the city have no idea who's, who they're coming after. They're looking at everybody. Y'all won't specify who to look at, so, so be it. You, you made the bed laying it. You know, have the investigation. I, I voted for him, but this is part, this is the, the part to go with it. And he has a right to protect employees.
Yeah, he has a right to, to protect the employees. I can't see...
If there was trust here in this council, there is no trust in this council.
One, one at a time, please.
I can't see an investigator lining up all employees and asking them questions. I mean...
I can't see what they're gonna ask anyway. I asked that, what are they gonna do?
We're soon gonna find out.
Yeah.
So, any...
Yeah, we got a, a hearing coming up. You might want to go ahead and try to...
Well, in the closing statement on that, my, my obligation is to these employees, when they come to me for concerns and being worried about being under the light and being asked questions that they, that they don't need to be asked, then I, my duty is to these employees to protect them from the unnecessary badgering themselves.
So, Mayor, again, you said questions they are being asked and that was why I asked you?
Maybe asked.
Okay.
Maybe asked. And then I'm gonna do that. All right. We're now gonna go to, and we're gonna have a public hearing, so...
Yeah, so, journalists, we, journalists, let's get a five-minute break so we can get people in and...
Right.
Three minutes.
Working session.